Hi, welcome to the January 2019 Village of Buchanan Board Meeting. Case of emergency, please use the exit to your right over here. And please do not use the elevator, use the staircase behind the elevator. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and Chief Tubbs, could you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone. First, we're going to approve the minutes of November 7th, 2018, Board Meeting. Any...
I have nothing.
Okay.
All good. Nothing from me.
Nothing from me either.
On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
December 4th, 2018, Board Meeting. Any questions, comments?
Nothing from me.
Nothing.
I have a couple of things. On page seven, the next to the bottom paragraph where it starts Trustee Zachary, four lines down, "Trustee Zachary believes this is going to come up in New York State Legislature because single recreational marijuana is now legal." I'd like to strike the word "single" because Rick, I'm not sure what that, something else might have been heard for that. And also in the next line down where it says marijuana is now legal in 13 or 14 states and is coming up in Canada, I'd like to eliminate "coming up" in Canada and say "legal nationwide" in Canada.
Right.
And that's all I have on this.
Okay.
Nothing.
On a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Oh, Rich, you weren't at that meeting. Okay, good. Comments from the floor, agenda items only. Any comments from the floor? No? What I'd like to do now...
You're my friend.
I am. Thank you. Thanks for reminding me.
You're welcome.
What I'd like to do now is we have something for Chief Tubbs who retired on Friday after many years here with the village. I remember when he started as a police officer here, I had my deli next door. So I've known Brian for many, many years and I watched him come in as a patrolman, become a sergeant, become a chief. So it's been a few years. So we, the Board has something for you and if the Board would like to come with me, we wish you much happiness and health, definitely health in your retirement. So if you could come into the room, front of the room?
Do you want all this?
Yeah, sure, why not?
No, we're taking pictures, I'm going to comb my hair.
You know, you should comb your hair once in a while. So, oh my God, 1982? Wow. March 1st, 1982 to January 4th, 2019. In appreciation of your exemplary service and commitment to the residents of Buchanan while serving as a member of the Buchanan Police Department, best wishes on your retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Why don't you stand in the middle so we can get a picture and put that in?
Tall people in the middle?
Yeah, something like that.
I'm not going in.
They look like a dwarf.
So we'd like to put your picture in the historical room because you're one of, how many chiefs did the village have? I don't remember.
It was Cindy's dad, Cindy's grandfather first.
Okay, Cindy Sagman.
And then it was...
Gilman?
Yeah, Bill Gilman.
Okay.
And then Oscar Brown.
Right, Oscar Brown.
And then Joe, Evan Butch, and Ron Lino and myself.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, you will.
Good luck.
I write things down or else I forget. It's been my honor to have been part of the Village of Buchanan and have served such wonderful residents and I thank you all so very much for this tribute. I've been told not to be a stranger and I've no intention of being so. I still live locally, I have no plans on moving, I've just been elected as President of the Corin Ambulance Corps and...
Good, congratulations.
And I very much plan on remaining watchful and when given the opportunity, remain involved with this wonderful village I consider my home. God bless the Buchanan Police Department and God bless the Village of Buchanan.
Thank you.
Maybe I just say something?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, if any of the Board members want to say thank you, Chief.
Sure, not a problem. Brian, thank you for your service. I mean, 37 years is a long time and welcome to the retirement club. There is a life beyond police work, but thank you for your service and enjoy your retirement and you're going to be missed.
Thank you.
Best wishes and much health.
Stay active and healthy.
That's the key. No, he's, so you know, you're busy at the ambulance corps, so that's a good thing, you know, still doing public service. It's great.
Your retirement, Chief, is you don't have to do anything anymore. That's the biggest thing about retirement is that word comes out of the language, you don't have to, don't have to do it today, you can wait until tomorrow.
Try telling them at the ambulance.
Well, given that, but enjoy, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And certainly, we're going to have you as we do some things with the Historical Society and thank you for what you did for me personally in terms of your sense of history as it related to the village and, you know, recording what went on and you are very helpful in that effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look at that, you retired one week and you're in the history room.
Just hope I'm not history.
All right, new business. A public hearing on a proposed local law overriding the property tax cap. This is something we do every year, as everyone knows, the tax cap is 2%. As we go forward through doing our budget, which we will be starting very shortly, we'll be able to see if we need to override the tax cap. And I just want to mention to everyone, starting in April of 2020, the last, the end of April is when Unit 2 will be shut down. So that does affect one month of our budget. So the budget we're going to be working on will start from June 1st of 2019 and ends May 31st of 2020. So we have that one month gap of Entergy being closed, one of the plants. So it's going to be a challenging budget, but we're working on a few things already. We're trying to get ahead of it. So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Can't even get it out of my mouth. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any comments from Board members on this property tax cap override? No? Okay. Any comments from the audience? This is something we do, this is just business as usual. Okay. So if there's no comments, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Rich, if you could, yes, please, if you could read that.
Resolution authorizing a local law overriding the property tax cap, whereas state legislature and the Governor enacted legislation that establishes a property tax levy cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase each year, and whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised through property taxes charged on the municipality's taxable assessed value of property will be capped at 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less, with some exceptions, and whereas the legislation provides for local governments to override the cap to protect the village from unforeseen financial circumstances, and whereas the state legislation requires that in the event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees, and whereas Local Law Introductory Number 1 of 2019 has been drafted to override the property tax levy cap law enacted by the state legislature if necessary, and whereas a public hearing was held and closed on January 8th, 2019, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby adopts Local Law Number 1-2019 to override the property tax levy cap law enacted by the state legislature. Be it further resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of the State of New York.
All right, thank you. On a motion?
So moved.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second? Oh, I skipped the second, huh? Who would like to do the second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. C, resolution stating polling places and hours for the next village election. Trustee...
Yes. Village of Buchanan Resolution stating polling places and hours for the next village election. Whereas the next general village election shall be held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, and whereas according to the New York State Election Law, Section 15-104, subsection 3, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan shall adopt a resolution which states the polling place in each election district and the hours during which the polling shall be open, the polls shall be open. Now be it therefore resolved that the polling place for the next general election for District Number 1 and Number 2 are located at the Community Room on the second floor of the Municipal Building, 236 Tate Avenue, Buchanan, New York, and be it further resolved that the hours which the polls shall be open will be between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. This year, there is two positions that, there are two trustee positions. Trustee Pasquale and trustee Jackson's positions are up this year. So like I said, there will be two positions to vote on. And any comments from the Board? On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We do have another resolution, but we're going to table this this evening because of civil service questions, so we're just going to put that table for now. Number 6, information from officers and departments, justice court report received and filed, police reports received and filed, and that's for November 2018. Attorney's report?
I don't have anything other than what we discussed in executive session.
Okay. Administrators' report?
I have a few things, excuse me. Water meters, we're down to about approximately 100 left out of the 750 or so, so...
That's good, we've done well.
We keep working forward, we're doing well.
When did that start, Kev? When did we start doing that?
We wanted to start, I think in October, we got a later start, we started in November, so...
So that's pretty good.
So we're doing all right, November, December.
Okay.
So we're moving along with that. We also wrapped up our paving work, which we know, but also they came back and finished up some of those catch spaces that we needed done, the ones that were in really bad condition. So, and we came in under budget for our paving overall, so that was good news as well.
That is really good news.
And we also made the first payment for the LED after finally getting that whole thing wrapped up. So it's five years and 125,000, it's $25,000 a year. And that even, that project came in under budget, it was supposed to originally be at around 144,000 and it was less than that, so...
We like when things come under budget.
Did we ever, able to come up with a number of how much we're saving in electricity?
I can get that information for you, I have it downstairs, I can circulate it to everybody, but it was...
I mean, it's obviously going to be clear savings after we make those five payments.
I can get all that information, I can report back for you guys. And I've also sent out the budget request memo out to the department heads to start getting that process moving because we wanted to have a workshop to discuss the budget in generality, so hopefully I'll have most of those requests to be back before that, so we'll have some idea of the needs of the different departments. And that's all I have.
All right, did you want to also mention the project we did with the infiltration, the INA?
Oh, yeah, sure. As I talked about, we had that manhole out in the Con Ed property that was bleeding in a significant amount of water into the sewer system and we finally got the repair, we got the authorization to go over the Algonquin easement to get to the access point that we needed.
This manhole was somewhere along the new easement?
It was cutting through the Con Ed property, you know.
So behind Blakely, it's behind 9A and Blakely Avenue in that area, that's all wooded and marshy and swampy.
Up in there.
So it was up in there, so we got access to it, we repaired it, and it's looking like from early estimates that we've reduced about 80,000 gallons of flow at the sewer plant, so that was good. We checked the other manhole that was out in that area as well at the same time, but it was in much better condition, so...
Okay, good. Yeah, that's important, our infiltration into our plant.
Just curious, why are there manholes in the swamp, in the woods?
Because the line cuts through there to get to the sewer plant, that's one of the...
It's along the easement line.
It cuts through the Con Ed property if you look at it.
What, is the manhole for servicing, is there, are there...
It's an access point along the way here, there's two manholes in that area.
Okay, so it's an access for service of the spectral line or the...
The sewer line.
Our sewer line.
Of our sewer line?
Yes.
Okay.
So this might, where's the beginning of that? Would that be through the Entergy property? Do you think that flows from that area?
No, it flows...
Or do you think it's from Westchester Avenue, in the back, of the back area there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to be looking at other ones also because that's important for us to get, you know, for this 80,000 gallons to go in and we have to process it, it's an expense for the village. So that was a, that was a huge savings there, so thank you. Anything else, Kev?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Okay, I only have a few things this evening, but I need to clarify something because the rumor mill here is alive and well in our little village. We will not, let me repeat myself, we will not be sneaking in a referendum in March to dissolve the police department, okay? I just want to put that out there because I have heard so much that is not happening, okay? So let's, you know, anytime there's rumors, especially now with everything going on in the village with the changes that are coming, please come to me, ask me, I will tell you the truth. If it's something that's confidential in an executive session, I will tell you, it's an executive session item, I can't answer that right now. So I don't want people running down Tate Avenue with their hair on fire, everyone needs to relax because the fire department's going to be really busy then, so just stay calm. I have some really good news. The regional economic development, there's a grant that comes out every year, and I think, when did you put that grant in, Kev? It was...
End of July.
The end of July. So we put in a grant for the sewer treatment plant for a feasibility study and we were awarded the grant of $40,000. So we will be able to use that money to look at the plant for upgrades and future use of the plant. The plant is a huge asset to us, our wastewater plant, and as we go forward and we're developing, this is down the road of course when Entergy releases the property, but when that property gets developed, we're going to have to look at our wastewater plant to have it expand it because we're going to need the extra capacity there. So this is just the very beginning, we are looking at doing the newest and greatest and best technology so that we can process whatever water we get in. We're also considering, there's nothing definite yet, but we are considering potentially taking in other communities and other things, but that's something the Board will be discussing further. But first, we have to start with a feasibility study. We, this is our second grant, we were very lucky to get, the first grant was from Senator Murphy's office last year for $100,000 for our Highway Department, our roof. So, and this is our second grant, $40,000 now. So as we go forward, we are going to be working more and more on grants. We also found out some information today that we possibly have someone, an organization, and I can't put that out there yet because we haven't finalized the negotiations on it, but someone who will be helping us going forward to apply for grants. As we see other communities get several grants and we are, we are behind the eight ball on that, so we are going, going forward, be working on more plants, more grants. And I want to thank Kevin because putting grants in isn't as simple as you think, it's an extensive process, there's a lot of work to it, it's very tedious and it's...
It's a specialty.
It's a specialty and it's labor intensive. So I thank Kevin for all his hard work, his diligence and his just perseverance of just following through with the grant. So thank you, Kevin, we appreciate that.
Can I just clarify?
Sure, yes.
So just to be clear, that the grant is for the purposes of doing the study and then hopefully down the road, when we figure out what we have to do, there'll be even bigger and better grants.
Yeah, because before...
But this is purely for doing the studies of what we would need to do to put, make this a...
A viable plant.
Plant for the next millennium.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we were going for this time because in a lot of times, just going for money without having a plan or a study, you kind of don't, you don't get anything.
They won't give you grants to renovate your plant if you don't have...
They want you to have researched what you should do.
A well-done study, so this is very good, good news.
And I believe the Governor has in, in the state budget, I think it's over 2.5, it's a million or billion, I forget now, it's a substantial amount of money for the upgrades of sewer treatment plants throughout the state. So I think it's 2.5 billion, it's quite a bit of money. Because not only us, but when you go into other communities, you know, the infrastructure of the wastewater plants, the technology each year gets upgraded, so, and it's not cheap to upgrade the, with the new technology. So we're on our first phase of this.
It's even better than my idea, which was just to ask all the residents to go to the Peak Scale diner when they have to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, that probably would have worked too, Nick, thank you. Nick's always thinking out of the box. And the last thing is, our Senior Director, Gabe DeRubo, after 26 years has retired and, you know, we want to wish Gabe well, we thank him for all his service to the village and we are currently in the process of looking for a part-time Senior Director. So if anyone knows of somebody that might be interested in that job, please bring an application or come in for an application or send your resume into the Village Hall and the Board will be looking to replace Gabe this year sometime. Okay, I think that's all I have, thank you. Trustee Pasquale, let's start with you today.
Okay, why not? First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and I'll say this again, probably like the fourth or fifth time, but I would really like to wish Chief Tubbs all the best in his, in his retirement. I had the opportunity to sit down with Sergeant Farrell over the last couple of days and I've always been reading these, these police blotter things and he wrote one up that I think is really interesting and I'd like to share it with all of you guys. On Tuesday, December 4th, at approximately 12:57 p.m., Sergeant Farrell responded to a village residence on a report of menacing with a knife. Upon investigation, Sergeant Farrell determined that a verbal argument between two tenants escalated into menacing with a knife. The victim in this matter decided not to press charges but wanted the incident documented. On Tuesday, December 11th, at approximately 5:25 p.m., Buchanan Police was advised by the Assistant District Attorney that there was a resident at the Village Court with an active warrant out of the City of Peakskill. Warrant was confirmed by Sergeant Farrell and was taken into custody and turned over to the City of Peakskill Police Department. On Wednesday, December 12th, at approximately 7:00 a.m., Officer Palmetto responded to a village location for report of an unconscious male in a vehicle. After securing the scene, Officer Palmetto observed drug paraphernalia in the vehicle and was able to wake the suspect and offered medical attention, which the suspect declined. After further investigation, suspect was arrested for unlawful possession of marijuana and issued an appearance ticket. Buchanan's been very busy over the last month, it seems. On Thursday, December 20th, at approximately 12:28 a.m., Officer Tierney conducted a vehicle and traffic stop on Albany Post Road for a vehicle and traffic infraction. After investigation, Officer Tierney found the operator of the vehicle to have their license suspended in the State of New York. The operator was subsequently arrested for aggravated unlicensed operation of a motor vehicle and issued several vehicle traffic summonses. And I'm sure most of the village heard about the last one, then I'm just going to kind of give a few sentences on. On Saturday, December 29th, at approximately 12:38 a.m., Detective Lotshner responded to a report of a man down in the roadway just north of Blakely Avenue on Albany Post Road. Upon arrival, Detective Lotshner observed deceased subject lying in the roadway and quickly determined that this was a possible hit and run. Detective Lotshner immediately set up a crime scene, made all the notifications to the necessary emergency personnel and immediately started an investigation. After joint investigation with the Westchester County Police Investigation Unit, an arrest was quickly made. Village of Buchanan Police Department would like to thank the Westchester County Police Department and their specialized units for providing their expertise and specialized support. Detective Lotshner should be commended for a quick response and reaction in preserving and investigating this incident. Well done, guys, thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Trustee Zachary.
Hi, thank you. First, I just want to mention something which you may know about in the Fire Department. I was speaking to someone at the Village of Croton and they told me about a, they're having a session there on January 24th that's open to village officials as well as Fire Department officials. It's a, from 7:00 to 8:30 on the 24th, Administration of Volunteer Fire Departments. And there'll be an attorney from New York State there discussing various issues and things that might be beneficial to anybody that wants to go. Again, that...
It's in the evening?
It's the evening, January 24th, between 7:00 and 8:30 at the Village of Croton. If you're interested, I think you want to call the village and put your name down. They sent me a flyer, but I couldn't open it on my email. I'm sure I could, I'll try again, about one in every 10 times I try to open my village email, it opens. You have that flyer?
I have that flyer and I signed up for it, so, but yeah.
Okay, okay, so, great. So if anybody else is interested, that's open to the village officials, volunteer Fire Department, anybody that wants to go. January 24th from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Village of Croton. I want to let the public know that at the next workshop, we will be doing a preliminary discussion of budget.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I personally have about a half dozen things that I'll wait till then that I'd like to address. I, I'm hoping that there'll be a silver bullet in a few years and our finances will be balanced out by some other sources of income.
Working on it, yeah.
But I think that we realistically will have to expect budget increases over the next couple of years and hopefully we can keep them as small as possible, but I personally think they could be significant. And I also feel that it will only get harder to spend money going forward, so anything that we need to do to bring the village into tip-top condition, I think we can do now more readily than in, maybe in two years or three years might be harder. One of those things is I think we are, I think we need to, I think we're shorthanded at the Highway Department, I think we need to fill one of the vacant positions there. I'd like, I'm proposing that we hire a part-time person in the Village Hall to act as an assistant to the building inspector and the administrator at their discretion of what has to be done, somebody that can do research and projects, project basis stuff. The two women that work in our office are busy enough running everything that has to be done here and so a person who works part-time that could just be an administrative assistant to the, to the two people I mentioned who could handle special projects is something I'd like to propose, as well as, you know, I have some other things too, and we talked last time about a fire truck situation, so I just, I feel like...
And garbage truck?
Garbage truck.
I'm sorry, I meant, I meant garbage truck. Well, there's a fire truck situation too, probably.
Yeah.
There's always a fire truck situation.
We've got a few situations, yeah, that's all right.
But, so several things and I... But, uh, so several things, and, uh, I, anybody that's interested in, um, can come to the next workshop to listen in. I want to also mention, I, I, was that coming in on the sound there? I just pulled this closer, I don't know if I was. Um, I also want to mention, and I'm afraid I don't know all the details, I read it quickly in the paper, but, uh, anybody here from the senior club? So, maybe we can relate to them. I'm sure they knew this a month or two months before me, but there is a new requirement for the registration for the Enhanced Star Program, which is open to seniors, it's an income-based Star, uh, program. Anybody is entitled to be part of the regular Star Program and get a discount on your, on your, um, property taxes through the state. I personally have been registered for that since I came to the village in nineteen ninety-one, and it saves me somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred to a thousand dollars a year on my taxes. Anybody's eligible for that. But seniors with income below a certain level are eligible for the Enhanced Star Program. There is a new, um, requirement, uh, for registering for that, so if anybody is getting that or thinks they might be eligible for it, um, I, I should have a bit more information, but I just wanted to get it out there. I thought, uh, that the senior club, they might have been addressing this. Maybe we can get something and, and put it on the website or something, if there's a, um, an, something from the state, the information for that?
And I think that has to be done by May 1st, right?
There's some time-sensitive aspects, so maybe, maybe we can, if we, if the state has a, uh, instruction thing on that, maybe we could put a link on the website for that?
Nick, do you know, uh, any ballpark figure on what the, the, uh, income level is?
Thirty thousand?
No, it was higher than that.
Yeah, I, I-
For the enhanced.
I want to say somewhere-
Eighty-six? I thought it was like eighty-six.
The enhanced?
No, I'm thinking it's somewhere in the fifty, sixty range?
Okay, it was eighty-six.
Okay, so clearly, I'm, I want to alert people that if you are interested in, or get the Enhanced Star, that you may want to check that you meet the current requirements, uh, and if, and, and we will try to get the information and put a link on, from the state, and put a link on the website, um, maybe on the Facebook page or something.
Sure. No, the only problem is, and I, I don't want to sound-
I'm sorry, I, I-
I don't want to sound ageist or anything, but most, like, most of the seniors wouldn't, I don't think, would be on Facebook. I, I think some are, but I don't think, you know, so there, I guess maybe a, a senior meeting, if we could have the documentation, like, the flyers up there to give them, at least some of the seniors will see it.
Yeah, and there's, there's five, five or six hundred seniors in the village, and about thirty that go to the senior club.
Well, sometimes more, depends birthday.
Well, not five or six hundred. So, maybe, maybe we could, um, maybe we can find, um, this, the number from the state to call and put something on our next newsletter? Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have more info now, I just became aware of it, and I just wanted to put it out there. I, um, I, I looked at the next work-
May I just say something?
Yes, of course.
I just checked, and it says for the Enhanced Star, it is-
Would you like a job as administrative assistant?
It is eighty-six thousand or less.
Eighty-six?
It is eighty-six, that's correct.
For Enhanced Star?
Yes. If, for in two thousand nineteen, it's going to be eighty-six thousand, three hundred or less.
And does it say anything about the date you have to apply for it by?
Um-
May 1st.
Let's see, um, that it, that doesn't, uh-
Well, we'll try to get that info and put something in the next newsletter, uh, for people to-
Absolutely.
To have a number to call or something. Next workshop also, I want to follow up a little bit on training for trustees. Uh, I did contact and spoke to people at the Village of Osning and at the Village of Croton, and both of them are pretty much in our position. Uh, they, it's, they don't have an, a, an exact requirement, but they, um, uh, they deal with it in their own way. Generally, it's on-the-job training as opposed to going somewhere for training, unlike with planning and zoning boards, which have a state requirement for a certain number of hours, which by the way, is four hours, but the Village of Osning told me that they voted to increase it to six. Um, Village of Osning seemed a little bit more proactive as far as their, um, attorney and other people that work for the village, uh, going out of their way to update new people on various things. But generally, we're all in that same position, so maybe we discuss that a little more at the next workshop also. And, um, that's it, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, I do want to respond to a few of those things. Um, NICOM has a three-day, and you've been there, Rich has been, the three of us has been there, and it's, the program is, is excellent, they have different, um, courses that you can take, and, and you go to whatever your interest is.
Yeah.
But that's the beginning of May. So, I've gone for a couple of days, I've gone where I've driven up there for the day and come home. So, I encourage our whole board, if there's something that you need more training on or you're not, you don't think you're completely up to speed on something, even if you spend the day there, it's a three-hour trip, Saratoga, a little over three, so-
Yeah, they're actually very good, and, um, they run workshops on specific topics. Uh, but sometimes, like with zoning, instead of being zoning one-on-one, where you get the basic background of what you would need to know as a trustee on zoning, it'll just be a legislative update where you'll go to a workshop, and they will just review, uh, legal cases from the last year. So, uh, NICOM also has a lot more resources than that, uh, I'll bring some more information to the next workshop. They have online webinars, and they have new trustee training, um, some online, and I believe some is stuff that you can go to. So, I'll get whatever information I can from, uh, from, from NICOM and, um, next workshop.
New York Conference of Mayors, yeah, because we say NICOM people.
Yeah, uh, New York Conference of Mayors, yeah.
Um, I do want to mention something about the fire department. Kevin, thank you for going on the 24th, and any of the board members, that would be great. I will be at the, um, the town Entergy meeting, so I won't be there. Um, there's, uh, one, a representative from Nita Lowey's office will be there, um, Sandy Galiff is always there, and also somebody, is it from Gillibrand's office? So, we're going to be discussing some things that evening out at the town hall. And also, you mentioned a part-time assistant in the village hall for the building inspector, that's-
And administrator at their-
Something I'm working on now with the building inspector, it's a possible shared service arrangement that I'm trying to work on with that, so-
Okay.
There's a lot of things going on, we're, you know, we're working on a lot of things, sewer treatment plan, three million dollars, but we're getting there, little by little.
Yeah.
We'll get it. Are you done, Nick? I'm sorry.
I am done, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Trustee Funchen, what do you have for us this evening?
Even though not, I do not have anything other than to say happy new year to everybody, and, uh, keep safe out there for the winter.
All right, thanks, Rich.
Basically, like Rich, uh, we've, we've gotten through another year, and first of all, I'd like to congratulate all the, uh, the village employees and the hard work that they bring, uh, to the village, uh, over and over again, from the trash crews to the leaves, uh, to Cindy and, and, and her crew downstairs, and Sharon. Uh, all that you guys do to our volunteer fire department, um, you know, all of that is in line with keeping Buchanan not only safe, but keeping it beautiful and up to date. Uh, again, a great shout-out to the police work that was done concerning that, that accident, uh, with the evidence that was basically in place that, uh, the county used to, uh, find out the person who did that, and it's certainly a tragedy at all. Um, the mayor and I, and Zach, uh, Nick rather, uh, went to the senior luncheon, which was a lot of fun, uh, as always, and, uh, again, I just want to reiterate what the mayor said about Gabe, uh, after his many years as the senior coordinator and the great job that he's done, and that he also enjoy his, uh, retirement, uh, going forward. And, uh, school's back in. Be aware, be aware of the kids on their bikes, and, uh, as always, don't throw anything in the sewers and curb your loving animal.
Thank you.
And have a great new year.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, comments from the floor? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Reed Outhouse, two forty-one Westchester Avenue. Uh, I just wanted to go on the record as saying congratulations to Brian Tubbs on his retirement. Great guy, longtime friend. Um, I joined the fire department thirty-two years ago, uh, he was already on the force as a patrolman for a few years, so, uh, he was already on his way up through the ranks, and I worked my way up through the ranks in the FD, and he just did a great job of keeping the relationship, uh, always tight with the fire department. And, uh, as Cheech knows, as a cop, and everybody knows, that's, that's important, that we all work together, so that always worked good for all that time. Uh, and I know all the new, uh, officers that we have, and the officers that have been here for a while, that continues, we got a great relationship going with the fire department, so that, that, uh, that goes without saying. Um, that being said, um, regarding, uh, Brian's retirement, um, I saw the, the item that was tabled tonight. What are the ramifications of having the department and not having a chief? I know it's a personnel issue, maybe you can and can't discuss certain things, but I know, like, with the fire department, I'm sure police department, it's even more critical, especially these days, but I know it's critical as far as chain of command and the way things work. You have to have a guy at the top calling the shots. What's the ramifications of that, and what kind of timeframe we're looking at here?
We have been in this position in the village once before, years ago. Um, usually, the, uh, next officer, the, um- Next ranking. Next ranking officer. I was looking for the word ranking, the next ranking officer would take the position. Um, there's different things going on, so, um, I know a chief's test was called for in March, and the board is going to continue to resolve this.
Okay.
Yeah, we're-
Again, that, my concern is-
It just was a civil service issue tonight that we couldn't finalize.
Okay, yeah, again, I, I understand personnel issues and how that works with, um, discussing that in public. Just coming from that line of business, chain of command and having somebody at the top calling the shots is extremely important.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully, we get that resolved quick.
Yes, we will.
I mean, it was only, like you guys said, it was only last week, I think it was last week, we had very high-profile crime. And, you know, when the TV cameras show up and stuff like that, you gotta have, it's, it's gotta be ready to go. Somebody's gotta be there to be the face of the department.
If necessary, if we get these things resolved, we can call a special meeting also.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Reed.
Eileen Absinthe, one thirty-eight Tate Avenue. Teresa and any board member, I'd like to either have you enlighten or dispel any, uh, questions about the Newburg plant being started up because there is no, like, not enough electricity since three men in a tub, rub-a-dub-dub, decided that-
It's one way to put it, yes.
We didn't need Entergy anymore, and does that mean if the Newburg plant is online to start up, and it can't be done in a timely fashion, does that mean that possibly Entergy will not close twenty-twenty, and it will be forwarded down the line a little bit longer?
That's a really good question. Um, we can't go under any assumptions at all. So, when we were told Entergy is closing, Unit Two is closing the end of April twenty-twenty, that has to completely be the complete focus, that, that is exactly happening. If, um, there's a few ways that the plant can stay open, they have been relicensed. Um, the relicence was extended for a few more years past the twenty, I think it goes to twenty-twenty-five. So, the NRC has relicensed them to give the flexibility if that happens, but let me tell you what's really important here. If that plant is to stay open, they would have to order the fuel the end of April this year. If that fuel isn't ordered, that plant's going down. It actually takes a full year to, for that fuel to be ordered and sent here. So, that decision's going to have to be made within the next couple of months. Um, I know everyone has asked, you know, what happens, what happens? That can't be something that this board is concerned with. Um, I am concerned if we don't have enough power, um, but that's in, in other people's hands. Um, they have assured, the Public Service Commission has done studies, the studies go out years, you know, this power isn't needed, blah, 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 blah. But you're right, they were counting on certain gas plants coming up, being fired up. We're losing over two thousand megawatts when Entergy closes, so, so how do we, you know, but they've said that they have the gas-fired plants, they have this, they have that. Um, one of the things which I found quite interesting, um, was said that, um, people would conserve. They were counting on that as part of the equation. Okay, I'm going to tell you this straight up, when it's zero degrees outside, I am going to have my house warm. When it's a hundred degrees outside, I'm not lowering my air conditioning. So, maybe I'm a greedy horrible person, I don't know, but this is what I'm used to. So, I don't think we can count on conservation either, you know, and, and I just, it just boggles my mind, I, I'm not a scientist, but I'm seeing construction. If you go into New York City, it's construction, it's construction, it's construction, and they're going to be using more power, and yes, these are supposedly more energy-efficient buildings, but you keep building, I, I'm not understanding. So, you know, we've been assured, we've been told, the powers that be, everything's okay, don't worry, we'll have it. But, that is one of the two reasons why that plant will stay open. One, if they find out there's not enough power, the plant will stay open for, I think, another two years. The other thing is, which we definitely don't want to see, if there's an act of war, if there's a war that ensues, that's another way that the plant will stay open. So, I, I, I don't know, I don't have that answer, but I do understand what you're saying, that was part of the equation of the replacement of the plant. So, it's going to be interesting how that unfolds. Any other questions, comments? Um, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues, um, again, and, um, yeah, we were in executive session before the meeting, but we, we need to, um, finalize something. So, on a motion?
On move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and have a great Buchanan day.